We are ready to go. You want to open it?
As Vice President, I'll open this meeting. Call, rule call, Nancy Perana.
Here.
Douglas Dunn here, Jennifer Ryan.
Here.
Brian Keefe.
Here.
Susan Hefelman.
Sandy.
Sandy, what did I say? And also Louis Pollak, who's our council representative. We also have two members that were appointed by the council at their last meeting. John Ballas and Michael Schmittner, Schmitzer. Neither one are here, I guess. But anyway, they need to be sworn in and hopefully we'll be, have a full board at our next meeting. Call the public, and that is, does anyone have anything they wish to speak on other than the agenda item that's here? Okay? Agenda item one is election of a chair and vice chair. Do I have a motion or suggestion nomination?
I nominate Douglas Dunn to be chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice chair?
Can we, my suggestion is, can we wait for the other two vacancies to be filled?
Okay, will you do that?
Unless someone else would like it?
I can't commit that long. I mean, I'd be in Bisbee that much longer. If I knew I was staying, I'd volunteer. If you were looking at me, I'm sorry, you'd be looking at me.
I was looking at you.
I don't know if I'll be here that much longer.
Well, two of you here have had the longest experience. You want to arm that pole?
I can see the tension.
You want to make a motion?
How about if we wait for the other two vacancies to be filled?
You've got more experience, though, than what they will have.
All right. Are you sure? You can have it.
I nominate Nancy Perana.
Okay.
Clear.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who's seconding?
Jennifer.
No.
Sandy. Give it to Sandy. Agenda two is, item two is a public hearing to recommend applications to transfer of city property. Discussion of possible recommendations as mayor and city council. Consideration of a request for the transfer of 2,500 square feet of city parcel APN 103-60-265A. The applicant wishes to acquire the city parcels due to his existing house and the yard encroaching on city property. Applicant is James Terry. All public notices have been met. Just as pursuant to Article 2.69 of the Bisbee City Code, prior to the sale, exchange, or abandonment of any city property, a proposal to transfer the subject property shall be referred to Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation by the commission. And that's what we're doing here tonight. First, I'll ask all on staff then to update us on this proposal.
The, you guys have seen, have heard this before, I believe.
Yeah.
This was the last of those that were being redone. But what happened was that Mr. Terry, in order to keep, to make certain that he's able to be the owner of that part of his house, we're amending the amount of property that he's asking, we have amended, the 2,400 is accurate, but we've amended it to keep it so that it will be under a $5,000 limit, so that it won't go to public auction.
Okay.
And it's, let's see, the, the reason for it, of course, as we said, is that the house was built kind of in the wrong place. It's got a terrace out in front that would be included in the sale, and it's also, and the better part of the house sits on city property, and so to correct that would be the right thing to do. And so my recommendation is that Mr. Terry should be able to buy the property for the, at the proposed price. And public comments, I've had his neighbor there, Mr. Jimenez, came in yesterday and talked with me about it, and he's the only person that I've heard from, and he's very pro the sale.
Okay. And again, this has been common for this commission, and certainly the historic town was laid out as often, the, what we thought the survey lines were, were not accurate, and a person finds themselves that they built a house that's been there for some time, but extends on to a city property or right-of-way, and so particularly new owners come forward and want to clarify that, to rectify that. The applicant is here. Okay, you want to say anything further? You've spoken to us before.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Yes, I have had the opportunity. Yeah, I bought the house and got some misinformation, and when I got the survey done, it was the fact that a house in 1915, built in 1915, wasn't on its own lot. It was, but I did go down to the tax advisor, the tax assessor, and he said that the house actually is listed in the taxes on my lot. The city lot is listed as vacant. Okay, but the city lot isn't vacant. The city lot includes probably two-thirds of 1,815 square feet, so 600 square feet is on the city property, and really what would be a little front yard, you know, if y'all just sold me exactly what the house was on, you know, I, you know, I don't think, I think I should be allowed to have a yard too, because I don't think anyone else is going to want it, you know. The situation, I don't know if you know what it is, but there's, you know, it's, the land's falling away there in the front, and so that's what it's including, and it would just give me a nice little yard there, which would be nice.
Okay. Commission members have any questions with the applicant?
Is this the house on Star Avenue?
No.
Okay.
It's actually, it's on Williams.
It's at the end of Star, though.
At the end of Star.
That's the same one that we're dealing with several months ago.
With the DRB?
No, here.
Oh, yeah. This is several months ago, and what happened with that was, there was a woman who owned a very small parson, 30 by 35, and she made a stink about me acquiring, going to you all and trying to get that, and she said, "You're going to landlocked me." And so Peter Gardner was involved back in those days, and he told me, you know, I kind of, we went on for a while, and he said, "Look, the only way you're going to get it is to buy her out. Just buy her out, or just give up the deal, because she's not going to budge." So I ended up having to cough up quite a bit of money to sort out the situation already. And, you know, so that way now, I feel it's a cleaned-up deal. Mr. Jimenez is happy, and hopefully, you know, my proposal is to try to put a sewer line up there, a avenue of sewer, because it's a condemned house without a sewer, and I don't know if y'all can stop me from doing that. I hope not.
I didn't know if we're involved in sewer lines.
Well, it seems like, you know, everything has to go before the council, pretty much.
That's already a done deal, James.
Yeah.
Your deal with that, with Public Works.
Yeah. But anyway, that's the intention, which is then open up a sewer line to 20 vacant city lots. And, you know, I was a little disappointed to find out that I was hoping to get maybe a little trade of a little more land around there for the sewer, but that'll be at another meeting.
My question, I have a question, the 20 lots that you're talking about, those are ones that you already own?
No.
Oh, that's city-owned.
The city-owned, vacant city lots that are developable, they have all the other utilities. The only thing they don't have is a sewer. Okay? So that's going to, that's, and the canyon, you know, is, it's, it's really, if you know it, you know, there's a mess up there with the fire that was up there. And, you know, hopefully, in time, if I get something going up there and we get a sewer line up there, then other people may want to buy those lots up there if I don't, you know, or can't get them. And then, you know, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good thing for the city, if you want to develop. If you don't, if there's, you know, if you don't want to develop it, then I understand that too, you know, we don't need it and we don't want to develop it. But I hope you won't stop, you can put a sewer up in my house.
Okay, further commission comments or commission questions?
I have one. I went to the county maps and looked at the area, and I am just wondering, I see, I see the lot 265A that belongs to the city, and it matches this diagram we have. I show your existing lot is 266.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. The application said 260, and that confused me because it was down the road.
Might have been a typo or mistake on my penmanship, pardon me.
Okay. So you are 266A?
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense, though. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll now open the meeting for thank you for a public hearing. Are there indeed anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this, pro or, or against? If not, then I pause the public hearing. I now call for commission discussion.
What caused us to not do this before? Was there any issue, or just needed to clean up?
The lady that owned that little parcel that I had to buy out because I would have landlocked her if we would have went through with it.
Okay.
She, we couldn't go through with it, Peter said, because of her.
Okay.
And so he said, "If you want to do this, you're going to have to buy that lady out, or you better just abandon it," you know, or whatever he said, "Because she's not going to budge." And she was stubborn and expensive.
Okay.
Other discussion? What is staff recommendation?
I recommend that you do it still, but I'm really happy that Mr. Terry is bringing sewer up there. What was situated up there was an environmental hazard, and it's going to, it is going to open up some more development, hopefully, up there, and the neighbors, then one neighbor there, Mr. Jimenez, is going to be connecting to the sewer also, and taking care of his problem that's been going on there. So this is, this is going to be a good thing in the big picture for the city of Bisbee.
Okay. Any, I guess real quick just popped in, because you mentioned we're keeping her, it's been adjusted to create a sale of less than $5,000, that's normal, I mean, that's nothing odd to do, that's, that's fine?
That is, so that it doesn't go to public, it doesn't go to public auction if it's under $5,000 and been associated with that property.
Just public auction, because the council still has to prove it.
Absolutely.
Okay, that was it. Okay, so you're just avoiding him having to go to an auction, he'll just write a check for $49.99 or whatever comes up to me.
Is the parcel number correct on the possible motion? Sandy, what did you say it should be?
It is, because he is looking at purchasing 265A, part of 265A.
So this is correct?
It was his current parcel number that was wrong. That's fine.
Okay, do I have a motion? There's a proposed motion here.
I move the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend the mayor and city council the transfer of 2,400 square feet from APN 103-60-265A for the sum of $2 per square foot.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item three, public hearing to consider a transfer of, application for transfer of city property. Discussion of possible recommendation of the mayor and city council. Consideration of a request for the transfer of 6,708 square feet of city property adjacent to 104D Lotland Avenue. The applicant wishes to acquire the city property to add to their adjacent residential property. Applicants are Ken and Sandy Huesman. All public notice requirements have been met. Again, pursuant to Article 2.69 of the city code, prior to the sale, exchange, or abandonment of any city property, a proposal to transfer the subject property shall be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation by that commission. All on staff to present this to us, staff report.
When was proposed, you've, you've seen the survey?
Let me interrupt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to accuse myself of this conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
The, you see that the survey that's been completed, showing what the Huesmans want to purchase from the city. There's, between those properties, there is a strip of land that you see that projects out to the, projects to the east primarily, if I remember correctly, yes. It projects to the east between their two parcels. Now, that looks like an easement, but looking at the properties and how it fits into everything there, and walking the properties today, I have every reason to believe that that is not an easement, that that is just the, when they purchased the property from the city, that's as far as they went with, just to keep it away, because it's, it's not even, it's, it's like 12-foot on one side and 15, or 12-foot, 12 on one side and 14-something on the other, so it's not even, like, and it goes up to nothing, because it falls off, and I was out there to see whether or not that was, that could be usable. If that was supposed to be an easement, that would maybe access the possible sale of city property on the other side, and verified that it wasn't, in my opinion. The, the reason that they wish, they wished to purchase the property is because they want to consolidate the properties and got the city property alongside. I think that their wall actually is trespassing onto the city property. Their, their, I think comes over, it may or may not, whether it does isn't really material at this point, but there's good reason for it there, too. Analysis is that the city, and all of these, all these proposed sales today, that both of the proposed sales and the abandonment of easements, I brought this before, the chief of police and the director of operations for the, for Public Works, to see whether or not this would fit into their, their plans, and if they had any problem with it. Neither of them did, and I usually go with the fire department too, but we were having a staff meeting, and George got called away, so I wasn't able to check with the chief, with the fire chief. But there's no reason to believe that, that he would have a problem with it either. The recommendation is to go ahead with the sale, and there's been one public comment that was, that was favorable.
Okay.
No questions.
What, do you have a question, the staff?
Yeah, I do have a quick question for staff. Joe, these yellow parcels, are they the ones they currently own?
Yes.
Okay, so they own everything in yellow here?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know if it's the right time to ask this, but I remember when we were doing something over there, is there any obligation to offer any of the neighbors a portion of the land? Because remember when we were doing over there, if you're selling something, one neighbor got the right to buy half, and the other one got the right to buy half, is that applicable at all here?
No, the other neighbor is the city.
Okay. All city around it, there's no other privates that touch this.
Well, we're, we're that coming up against, it's coming up against a large parcel of city property.
Okay. Thank you.
Which they're just taking a sliver from.
Yeah, just wanted to check.
Did I come up here on the mic and I told him I could stay sitting there, because he covered most all of it.
Well, you just say. Good evening. I'm Ken Huesman, we live at 104D Lotland. You have, one of you, it's in the D, and there is no, there is no partial freedom. Our house sits on lots 241, 242, and 244. We also own lots 337 and 338. There is a driveway on the west side of our property that we've used to get to the back part, lots 338 and 337. We own a little piece of it, but mostly it's city property, and we would like to purchase that so that we have a driveway to the back of the property.
Okay, any questions from council or commission of applicant?
I guess my only question is, is this, is this proposed property, is it any value to any other neighbors except for you?
No, it's all city. Down to a road, and there's not enough food to fill. It's time to go purchase it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions? Okay, well, I thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll now open this for a public hearing. Whether anyone has, wishes to speak for or against, or has questions? If none, then I pause the public hearing. A call for commission discussion. This size, or this will actually go to, how to bid, right? Is this correct?
This will, this will go to public auction, because it's over the limit of value.
Are questions of staff, communists? Do I have a motion?
I move the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend mayor and city council the public auction of the APN 103-72-0518 for the minimum bid of $16,770, or $2.50 per square foot.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Indicate that we have one.
Thank you.
So it was four and one. Commission, they're abstaining. Agenda item four, review, discussion, and comments regarding the abandonment of a portion of an easement adjacent to parcel number 10399053B, also known as 223 Youngblood Hill, as described in the attached survey. If you've read the minutes of the last council meeting, that this was brought before council, and council is referred to us for comment, and normally this would not come to us, would go directly to council, but this is what the council has requested. Can you fill us in on this? Joe?
As I figure out which one I'm in, I'm going to see that one. What's happening is that the city, the city no longer is selling any of the so-called easements or right-of-ways, and it's kind of, it's kind of up in the air as to what the nature of that property, of our properties even are, since it was deeded to us from either the state of Arizona or, or Phelps Dodge, depending on who you ask. But the point, the point of it is that we're no longer going to, we're no longer going to do that. The city is proposing that Mr. Conklin take ownership of the property, that we will, we will abandon the easement that we have across it, and the city engineer has reviewed this and approved it, and the city manager has looked at it, and she's, opinion is in, is in favor of letting Mr. Conklin have it, and it's, we're asking for a, a opinion from the board, from the commission.
Do you want to give the applicant an opportunity to speak, or?
I think that'd be appropriate, yes.
Mr. Dunn? Members of the board, how are you guys doing? Todd Conklin, 822 Seatease Avenue, Bisbee. So I started construction at 223 Youngblood Hill, Nightmare Project. I own the parcel on the side of it, and I put in application to purchase city property, and it got reviewed by the city attorney. It went in front of council, and they recommended that we are here today. And so I, Mr. Harrow was, I think, what's the, Ledbetter, the attorney? Mr. Ledbetter or Mr. Harrow are of strong opinion that, that we'll just abandon the easement, and they wanted to get to your guys' lesson on it.
This is, again, unique, something I've not experienced before. Does commission members have any questions of the applicant?
Well, I went up to look today and ran into Mitch Anderson, who says that you have already excavated the property, which eliminated a drainage ditch, and he's concerned about flooding.
That's true, and why Mr. Ward already let you know that they're, we're working with city engineer and everything to go ahead and do additional drainage. Ms. Ryan, previously what it was, there was just a goalie, which there was no proper drainage, it was literally just a.
He said there was a bridge over it.
Can I finish real quick?
Yes.
Yeah, so there was just a crack in the mountain where the water came through. So he is correct, there is a bridge, and my neighbor in back, he already started the infrastructure with a ditch, but that just literally comes under the bridge and then just hits the mountainside and flows down. So I have started some excavation up there, but with Mr. Harrow, what I've agreed to do is to continue that culvert and make sure that we have a proper watershed once it gets down to the bottom. And so that's the plan, is to work hand-in-hand with the city, it's going to, I'm going to pay for it also, to improve the city land. And so I feel that's a good deal for the city, you know, because they don't have to come in there and do any infrastructure, but to answer your question there, or I don't think you asked that, to elaborate on that, there was no drainage there. It was literally just a crevice in the mountain where the water just came out. So now there'll actually be proper drainage.
But you're already excavating property you don't.
With the permission of the city, the city engineer has been.
Mr. Harrow, everybody knows, Ms. Coleman, Ms. Coleman went up there already.
Well, real quick, are we dealing with an easement or land owned by the city? Because if an easement, isn't it technically the land under it's owned by the engineer already?
Like I said earlier, it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to understand. I don't fully understand how. We used to, we used to think that we owned our easements and our right-of-ways. We no longer believe that.
Okay.
And so we're abandoning an easement is what we're, we're asking for here, but the city has been in control of that easement, that is why they gave Mr. Conklin permission to do the work that he had done up there.
So who owns the land? Just, I guess I'm, just as I'm asking, because easement isn't ownership of land, it's just control of ingress and egress or use of it.
This question was asked of Mr. Ledbetter at the council meeting, and he could not provide an answer, which is the main reason why this is back in your lap. We have no objection to Mr. Conklin taking possession of the property, we just weren't told that that's what was going to happen. Mr. Ledbetter could not answer who owns the property, and because of that, two or three council people decided it should come back here for further review. There was also some public opposition to the move, and it was critical to determine if anyone would be harmed by this abandonment, in other words, would people be denied access to their property? I still don't know the answer to that question. I would ask you all, Mr. Ward, if, if that's been resolved.
I've got a pretty good knowledge of the terrain over there, and it doesn't seem to me that that would encroach anybody's right to their property there.
With those two issues being resolved, I could say there would be no opposition from the council members who objected to it originally.
And I'd like to elaborate a little more, too, to give you guys further information. I conducted a survey at the beginning, I've done every application, every permit through the city. Nothing, nothing has been done without it being transparent, so there's paperwork up to this point. I literally tried to purchase the property, you know, at fair, fair market price, and it's, you know, between the city now, and they really just wanted your guys' recommendation at that, at this point.
So, are we talking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have.
I have, I just thought also.
Yeah, I'll call on you next, to, to the public.
I'm, I'm looking at this map right now, and it looks like you I'm, I'm looking at this map right now, and it looks like you currently own 53A.
Oh, I'm sorry, madam.
Is that, is that what?
I own, I own 223 Youngblood Hill, and I also own the parcel that's on the right-hand side of it. And where this activity is taking part and where that city land is tied into my parcel, it's all in the, in the same vicinity.
It looked like on the, the county maps that I can access online, that Phelps Dodge is listed as the owner of that.
They, they, they do that because, they, because they own the mineral rights underneath of it.
Okay.
But they don't have the surface rights.
They don't own the surface rights.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Other questions?
So what is the, and I'm new, so what is the, um, what's the process or what is our history in just transferring property that we don't own or we don't?
Up to now, we've always, we've always sold off, we've always sold the easements for a fair market value. But the, um, the, by the advice of legal counsel, we're not doing that.
And what's, what's the reason for that?
Because the assertion is that we don't really own it.
So are they asking?
That's, that's what I'd said before, that the, the actual ownership of it is, is very cloudy. All, all of the easements in town and right-of-ways, because the way that it was transferred, I guess, way, way back in the day. And so, to, to keep out of that quagmire on easements, we are not going, we're no longer going to sell them. We're gonna, um, we're gonna abandon them.
And then what, what's the process after abandonment?
Then the, like the, um, you've, you've seen, you've seen the map of the, the one that's, that's item number five, that, that would consolidate that property, and the, the tax assessor would, if they abandoned it to that property owner, then they could consolidate it on the tax roll to where it'd be one parcel without the easements across it, because we gave up, we surrendered the easements.
And there's no utilities running through there, it's, it's, uh, virgin land, there's nothing in there, it's just dirt.
So if that's, so if it's.
We've never done this before, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is new ground for us.
I did, I did a little research on it too, and they have different types of easement, drainage easements, utility easements, and if there's a utility easement, then there would be certain areas that would be, I guess, off limits, per se. I, I know you're a little sharper on this than I am, but.
I'm as sharp as a tack.
Oh, you're not. You're as sharp as a razor blade. So, um, uh, I, there's just, there's, it's just virgin dirt, there's, there's nothing in there.
Okay, so my question is, so that if you own a parcel here, and you own a parcel here, and you were abandoning this, correct? Is that right? So then we would survey all of that, and we would be ta, he would be taxed on all of that.
Yes, it would, it'd bring it onto the tax roll.
So it's just taking an abandoned easement and actually starting to get some money for it?
That's true.
There's also, it's called a drainage easement, about four feet on either side. That the word drainage in there for a reason, there must be something.
I met, I met with Jesus at the beginning, before I did any excavation or any work, and we went up there and we did a site walk, uh, Jesus and Matt, and we went through it, and he, he advised me what he wanted to see done as far as the drainage. And so what he basically told me is that there's an area in there that there can't be anything there but the drainage. And so, um, the city's actually excited about it because they're not spending any money, because I'm gonna go in there and do all the infrastructure to get the proper watershed out of there.
The, the Exhibit B map, right, is, is what was done when, when Mr. Conklin was trying to purchase the property. And if he were to purchase the property, he would maintain a drainage easement as part of his purchase agreement, that, um, moving the water through there. But that's no longer, um, valid.
And that's brand new, that, that is not valid as of pretty recently?
The drainage easement?
Yeah.
Yeah, the drainage easement was, was, if Mr. Conklin had purchased the property, then he would, he would be required to keep that drainage easement across there. Not, right, and then with the way that it is being proposed, he would still be doing it, but it wouldn't, it would, it would not be a drainage easement anymore.
I would love if you guys would, um, if, if, if this goes through, if, if you guys could, um, uh, make a motion for that, to go ahead and incorporate that into the language. So, because I'm gonna do it anyways, um, I have to do it. Because, and there's not a lot of water flow up there. My neighbor in back of me, and it's funny, everybody around me totally supportive of me, it's everybody that doesn't live near there, uh, that, uh, has given me scrutiny on it, it's.
Then who are those neighbors?
So I have, um, Guy Preston, he's on the left, I have, um, oh my God, of course he'd ask me, but anyways, the very, the one in the back, uh, Mike Larson, told me he's happy with everything. And then, ah, there's the guy in, where that white, where I own these trees.
I know, I know exactly who you're talking about.
Yeah, he's like, he's like owner of Pet Techs all over the world or something, he's like, yeah, it's great. And then, uh, Jim Miller, the locksmith, he's right there. And so that's my neighbors that are right there, and Dan Towsh, I sold him a lot.
The Carlsons wanted to buy that at one point. They live up the stairs and on the left. And, um, they, they tried, they tried to purchase this, you know, a year ago or more. And what happened is that the county determined, rightly so, that they weren't, um, they couldn't buy that because it wasn't, it wasn't, um, associated with their property, and it would deny access to Mr. Conklin's property, who it wasn't even his property at that point. But that was, um, they denied the, the, going through with the sale of the property.
Because if you look at the survey that we had done, that portion that I want to purchase is tied in directly to my property. So it's like, I'm not trying, you know what I mean? I was just, it's literally attached directly to my property.
So do you have access to your existing property without it?
No, uh, because I, traditionally, uh, you'd have to go through the neighbor's yard to get there. And, um, in a good faith, I contacted the neighbor on the left-hand side of me, I think his name's Guy Preston or something like that, and I said, hey, could I purchase the staircase there? And, um, I think he's going through some, um, something's happened in his life where he couldn't get back to me. And, uh, I offered him a fair price for it, so, ah, yeah, no, I couldn't. I, no matter what, I have to come through city property to get.
If the property had been sold to the, to the Carlsons, it would, it would effectively, it would entirely landlock the 223C, or 223 Youngblood Hill. And that was why it was, it was turned down.
Other questions?
So, yeah, so since this is precedent, right, well, basically we're setting precedent. This is what scares me, um, as we move forward as a real estate agent in Bisbee, Arizona. How, how many of these type of situation do you think or reasonably foresee that we could come up against? Is this a pretty rare thing, or in your opinion, do you think that we're gonna see other things like this?
We probably average one a year.
Just one a year?
Maybe one and a half. But tonight you have two.
Right, and this, again.
Because averages don't work like, you know.
Yeah.
We want them to.
But, um, most of the time this hap, when this does happen, uh, it happens in Old Bisbee.
Yes.
So if we go to Warren or to San Jose or to any other part of 85603, um, do you foresee or can you reasonably, make some sort of reasonable estimate that how many more of these will be coming across planning and zoning?
I don't think you're gonna see any that aren't coming out of Old Bisbee. Old Bisbee, you know how that, you look at the, the maps, there are easements running up the side of mountain cliffs and all kinds of, where, you know, straight up from the water tank there on Tombstone Canyon, straight up the hill, where you couldn't get a, you couldn't get a rock climber to go through there in some of those places. So it was, it were drawn, these easements were drawn up by somebody who didn't have any experience at what the topography is in Bisbee. So we wind up with a lot of strange easements, and then very often, the adjacent property owners have already used those easements, have been built on them, that's very common too.
Other questions?
And your neigh, you, you've already, all your neighbors, north, south, east and west?
I'm not lying to you. The only per, the only people that I've had problems with, or not problems, I have had objections, are people that do not live within that radius of my house.
In relation to this, where is Councilman Higgins' property?
Higgins is directly across from him, so.
And his parking lot?
Uh, it's, if Mimosa, oh my, if Mimosa is, um, yeah, okay. Joe picked the hell up.
So his house is across the street, but his parking is?
Yeah, he's watched the whole thing, we're like literally house to house, from across the, from across where it goes.
His, his, his little piece right there.
So not touching this in any capacity?
No. Except against, there's, there's a continued easement, so it goes on.
And it won't affect him in any way?
It will not.
Where is Mitch Anderson's house, on Youngblood?
He's on Youngblood Hill.
He's a long ways away from here.
He's a quarter mile away.
No, it's a quarter mile? Probably not a quarter mile.
Eight?
It's a couple hundred yards.
Yeah.
It's a full street over, like you'd have to.
But when you fold everything and you look at it, it, I would guess, at least 200 yards.
Other questions?
I think the only one person who would be harmed by not doing this would be Mr. Conklin himself, because he denies him access to his property.
Are we transferring this at no value?
That was the original question, and the answer to that is yes. It will just be absorbed, because it's adjacent to his property, it'd be absorbed in his plan. And the reason is, nobody else who that property belongs to, at least that's the reason that it's given to me.
Further questions? Thank you, are there other, um, community members who would like to speak on this?
You don't have any more questions, John? Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, my name is Marka Patience, I live in the general vicinity, not actually right there, but of course. There are these stairways, they're called the Youngblood Hill Stairs. And, um, for years they've been kind of holding the sides of those, uh, sides of the stairs open, because there are people living up those stairs that use them. There was actually a person here at the, uh, council meeting, her name is Shirley, Shirley Griesen, and she's actually adamant against it, because she is in a way landlocked, and I believe the Carlsons will also be landlocked there. And Mitch Anderson, I know, he might be living far over, but he uses some of the stairs, he could use some of the stairs coming down that way. But anyhow, um, the one I'm thinking of most is these stairs, because that area on both sides of these stairs has been open for, for probably a century or so. But now it says that this parcel tree acquisition from city of Bisbee, I don't even know when that happened, I've been leading a ministry, uh, zoning, planning and zoning for the last two years, and I never seen how that property was acquired from city of Bisbee. I don't even know what it means there. It says acquisition from city of Bisbee, and it goes all right up against those stairs that's coming down there. And, and those stairs on both sides there, I've been trying to keep them open all these years, and, and now that has been, I don't know if it's acquired or is it planned to be acquired, or, or it's done deal or what. But anyhow, then on the, the other side of this easement, on the right-hand side, it's Bisbee property, and that is, as you said, it's been already excavated, it's a done deal, and, uh, would you, and you say, is this gonna happen somewhere else? After I live on 206OK Street, across from me, there is property there, and the property owners up there, they have parked six scooters on that area, and they've had them there for a year, and I asked them, so they are transferring that property to themselves, and this is gonna be exactly like this. There is a, there is a, they, they have these six scooters, and then they build themselves a shed there in that same drainage ditch actually, that is the end of this place where he, he wants to, to build. And, uh, now somebody, I think they were told not to open up, so they have a big huge fence they rolled up, and that's lying right there. I, I'm just thinking to go there and, and take, clip it up and, and take that fence away there. Then they say, don't touch my scooters, don't touch my fence, that's gonna be the same thing. And this is just a, a trend here in Old Bisbee. The easement here, it's not really affecting me that much, but it affects me because of the stairs, because someday I might be dreaming of connecting those stairs to the upper OK Street. I think that was the, the plan once upon a time, to do that, and, and when that property is just up against it, and then when they have this, this easement here, I guess he's getting a marvelous deal, because he gets that lock there to, to have a parcel tree, and then the city property over here, and that city property on the other, on the south side of this easement, has that ever been to, to, to the city, to here, plant, planning and zoning? That's a piece of city property that's on the side of this easement, it says in that quote you had, that everything that's gonna be transferred should go through here, and I never heard anything about that. They are just talking about this little easement, I, I don't know how, the easement here, there are, there are three parts here to this. And also as a trend, it's a trend, because where I live on 206OK Street, nobody's doing anything about it, and I, I believe like in 10 years, they are just gonna take that land, and they're gonna say, can you please transfer it to us? And they say, okay, you used it for so many years, you can have it. Thank you.
Any response or comments or?
Yeah. The, the proposed abandonment of the, um, easement there below 23 does not affect the stairways, uh, access whatsoever. It's between the stairways, and the stairways remain public access to everybody, and they're not, the proposal does not include those stairways.
Other comments from the community?
I just think it's, you know, I, I think that.
Come up to my plate.
James Harry, not, but just, you know, me having paid for the land that I just got, you know, and there was a problem, because the house was on the wrong thing, you know, and then I go, oh, well, too bad it wasn't an easement, that's all.
Part of it is an easement, James, you need to ask for it. Remember, on the, on the left-hand side?
Right.
You, you can benefit from this too.
Right, okay, well, that's all I said.
Comments, questions, count, commission?
They should have sent this to us, so.
Well, they did.
Just my thought, it's, that doesn't even seem like something we should be looking at.
Well, that's, we haven't in the past.
So, no, I don't, I'm ready to make a motion to approve it, so I don't think they should have sent it to us. Sorry, I'm just speaking.
How do we wanna, this is so unique, I, you know, we, this is not a public hearing, you know, we're not doing a formal recommendation to the council, uh, what are we doing?
I think it'd be, it'd be appropriate if you guys could, um, vote on whether you were in, you were personally in favor of the, the abandonment or not.
Is that just a vote or are we in a motion?
So my, so my issue is, is not this per se, it's, we're, basically if we've never done this, or planning and zoning has never done this, we're setting precedent.
If we make a mistake on this, we're not locked into the future into making the, the same mistake. When, when we've done, when you, when there's a mistake made, we're, we're not, we don't forced to keep with that forever, if there is a mistake made.
There's really no other use for this land or anything, it's not like someone's gonna go in there and build a house or anything, right? We're not using it for parks?
Yeah, I say, can I say?
Come up to my.
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm literally just speaking.
People living up, up the stairs, Youngblood Stairs, they park there, and this woman was here at the council meeting, and she was very upset that she couldn't par- she couldn't par- she, that she couldn't park there, 'cause these.
Okay, that's parking, but, I mean, it's not, it sounds like it's just a piece of, an island sitting there, which I'm sure Bisbee has a ton of. Um, from my time sitting here, there's a lot of this, this piece of dirt. I don't know, it just, it just seems like it's just a piece of dirt sitting there.
I think the drainage needs to be included.
He suggested that could be conditioned to the.
I thought you said we were already doing it. I thought the drainage was a given. I didn't think we were abandoning the drainage. I heard talk of, there was activity on the drainage, he was gonna be following along with somebody, doing everything they asked, and that the city would be benefited, 'cause they weren't gonna have to spend the money to do the drainage. Did I hear all that correctly?
You did.
So, do we have to stip- stipulate that the drainage is there? It sounds like the drainage is already in the plan.
The drainage is in the plan. You could do it, you could do it either way.
So he doesn't have to, right?
He doesn't have to?
Yes. If it's his property, he doesn't have to.
He'll have to arrange for drainage through the property, because he's altering, you'd be altering any path of natural flow of water.
He's already alternative, so I think it should be included.
That'd be good, put a condition.
Okay.
And what, could you tell me again, what was the attorney's, uh, what did the inclusion to the attorney come to on the transfer of property like this?
I've got this, I've got this second or third hand from the attorney, I haven't dealt with the attorney on this, so I cannot, anything that I say, he can't be held to, because I, you know, we, there's no meaning of the minds here. But, that there's, there's an issue over whether or not we, we own these pieces of property in the sense of ownership, in the lea- in the legal sense. And so, therefore, we don't, um, we don't wanna be selling it, selling them, such as we have always in the past. It's just, it's just to keep us, it's to keep us from liability, and, um, to keep the, the people of Bisbee out of that libel, of that situation where we would have liability associated with it.
So I guess that's, I guess that's where I'm scratching my head. So, we are commissioners for the city of Bisbee, and the attorney can't tell us what we're supposed to do. I'm lost.
Yeah.
Well, that's not what you're supposed to do. Do you, would you guys, do you guys think that it's going to be, it would be advisable for the city to transfer, to abandon this easement, and allow Mr. Conklin to assume it? I thi- I think it's really what it comes down to?
And there, there's a procedure for this, even though this is a precedent. The procedure is that this goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission for their consideration, and they make a recommendation to the council as to what to do. That didn't happen. And because there were so many questions that couldn't be answered at the council meeting, it was council's vote that it be sent back here for a thorough airing, and that's what it's getting right now. The lawyer, Mr. Ledbetter, could not in good conscience say that the city could sell the property to Mr. Conklin, because he was not of the opinion that the city owns the property. Halt Dodge or Freeport, Moran owns the mineral rights, but not the, I forget the term, but.
Surface.
Yes. So, that was the confusion, and they took it directly to the council for a vote. We weren't satisfied with the answers, so we sent it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The council gives a lot of respect and credence to what, to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Very much so.
I think my problem is, we don't have any more information than the council had, I don't feel. Is there, uh, is there some way that the, um, city of Bisbee could obtain the property, and then from there, we do the?
It's too ne- it's so nebulous. My understanding is that, that it's not possible for us to obtain a clear title to the property.
So then it wouldn't be possible for Mr. Conklin to obtain?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I don't know what you're gonna do with it, but just, just pretend that, just five years down the road, and then you want to transfer the property to another person, so you either A, sell it privately, or B.
I, I couldn't, because it's still, it's just an abandoned easement.
It would, it would landlock the property, and he's not allowed to do that.
Yeah. I was in favor.
So what you're saying is, if you don't have this easement.
Now, hang on. I'm sorry, sir.
Bear with me.
I'm sorry.
I'm not saying it's yours, I'm not, whatever. If this easement remains as it is, technically, you cannot access, legally, you don't have legal access to your property? Is that accurate, right now, today?
Oh, right now, yet, yes, sir, one hundred percent.
Okay, we've dealt with this before. We don't let landlocked properties exist here. We've had big kerfuffles here over landlocked properties. We, he dealt with a landlocked property. So I don't think we can also stamp some, or deny someone proper access to their property. As far as down the road, I'm assuming there'll just be a new deed drawn up, he'll, he'll file it, and, and may or may not ever come up again, so, 'cause there's no one, maybe you'd have to have somebody underneath it who'd come in and say, "Hey, wait a minute, that's my land," or something.
And that's the reason why I started this process, is because.
But if he's got a landlocked piece of dirt, I think he's, I mean, any property owner would be deserving of access to it. And that's what, it sounds like all we're dealing with here is giving him access to a piece of property he already owns, and unfortunately, because we're in a wonderful mining town from a century and a half ago, there just wasn't done right, so someone just left a hole of dirt there that no one's claiming ownership.
And that's the reason why I tried to purchase it, and I came in front of you guys, I think, uh, last year, for eight twenty-two Seapace Avenue, where I bought a piece of, uh, city property that was attached to my garage, and I built a gabion wall there. Go up there, I did what you guys, you guys asked me to do, I built the wall, and, um, it created some parking up there. And so, I was under the, um, assumption that I would be able to do that again, because it's attached to my property, and so, um.
And by granting you an easement, we aren't cutting anyone else off, right? We're not creating anyone else being landlocked.
You are not.
So, it sounds to me.
But the people of Youngblood Hill.
That doesn't, okay. I appreciate that, when you're talking about stairs and stuff, this is a piece of dirt that our people are currently walking across.
The city stairs that Ms. Patience is referring to is, um, on the right and left of the property, and they are not being, um, blocked or inhibited in any way, but that public access is still there.
And it'll always be there.
I couldn't, there's no way that I could block it, even if I wanted to.
But Todd, you said that you asked somebody, I think you said.
I did, I did a, an application to purchase city property.
The stairs?
No, no stairs.
No, 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 when you said earlier, you asked somebody if you could purchase the sta- some of the stairs?
No, I never said that, yeah, yeah, uh, no, just.
Oh, the, the neighbors. He's talking about an ac- an access across the neighbor's property.
Oh, those stairs, I'm, I'm sorry.
From the stairs, from this public stairway, he was trying to buy access to his property.
Through my neighbor, uh, Dick Preston, on, on the left-hand side, and so, traditionally, the route that went to two twenty-three Youngblood Hill was through that staircase right there, but that staircase is owned by my, the house on the left-hand side. And so I, I made an attempt to purchase that stairway, a small sliver of property, and he's not in stable mind, and he denied, he denied me, is what it was. And I was gonna give him fair market value for the, the property, and do legit through Pioneer Title and everything, and that would give me access to, uh, the left-hand side of my yard. So, this is my other attempt to not be landlocked, that's just what it is.
Okay, so the stairs that we see on exhibit B, the stairs going up, that's not the stairs that we're talking about?
No, ma'am. That's a private, it's a private staircase that is, uh, it's gonna be in the middle, but it's not gonna show on that.
Okay, so, uh, what Monica's referring to is, on exhibit B, is Monica's referring to the staircase on the left-hand side?
Yeah, that's what takes you up to.
Or maybe the right-hand side, but either one of those is public stairs.
That's what takes you up all the way to OK Street.
That aren't gonna be, that aren't gonna be ever sold.
But, but they, they have this parcel three, what is that parcel three?
So if you know about sub parcel three acquisition from city, the one below, but between, below him to Mimosa, is that the one we're dealing with right now?
No, the, the, this is something that's been done.
Oh, well, that's not here, I don't know.
The parcel three, I, I'm wondering when that happened, and how it happened.
I don't, I.
'Cause I mean, uh, that's what, I think Mr. Conklin thinks he'll access to that part also. He has acquired that from the city somewhere, along the line.
No, ma'am, I have not.
So that is not gonna be developed, then? That part to the left of the, the drainage?
No, ma'am. No.
That's the easement we're talking about, right? The sub parcel three, is that what?
I think you're confusing the stations.
No, I'm not confused, it says acquisition of city of Bisbee right here. What is this?
No, it didn't say it's been acquired, it's, I think that's what we're dealing with.
That the city's gonna.
What I even, oh, yeah, so it is this.
That the city is looking to abandon.
Yeah, okay, but look how close up to the stairs it goes. These, these stairs are supposed to be open.
Yeah, if you could see, this is, this is a parcel that Mr. Conklin owns, here's the city, the city easement be there, and the city property there.
Yeah, and then the city property over here also. So, I mean, this.
But there's nobody, there's nobody here that's landlocked here. It may be assertion that they're landlocked.
Yeah, this person that lived up here, she was here, she's, she's.
Look at, look at my map. That, these people here are on the stairs, these people here are on the stairs. This property here, these up these stairs, that these, none of these people around him are being landlocked.
No, he, he is not landlocked, he can go from here over to there.
No, he cannot, because this is, this property belongs to whatever these people are, number fifty-two. Parcel three two.
Yeah, but I mean.
That he, when he had to cross, he was crossing, he used to cross the property, and that's what he said, he tried to.
I, I would, I would not have posted if you just threw a line right here, so you keep, could keep these stairs open.
This, he's not closing those stairs up.
He, he is, because some, we wanna have a road there down one day, especially for maybe these people over here, they need, they wanna maybe build a road here at one time.
It's not changing, it's not changing that he's moving those stairs whatsoever. Like, it really isn't. This is, this is the area down here.
Yeah, but you said, this is the lot he wants, so I mean, I, I know you're doing what you want, I don't know.
Well, we're not cut, we're not cutting off the public, we're not cutting off the stairs.
We're not.
Nobody is.
The side of the stairs, they were, they were wide on both sides, have been for years, and now, now, they are not anymore.
Currently, you're saying, right now, today, they are not, the, the stairs are not?
Wide. They are wide today, but will, will not be after, after this acquisition.
Um, and we, this was all notice, we don't have a single neighbor here, a contiguous property neighbor. It says there was notice of three hundred feet somewhere on the.
That, it was originally, did, did this, did, you never did complete the, the form and all? Did you, for, did it go before, uh, hearing to buy their property?
Yeah. Did, yeah, I, I did the application for, uh, purchase city property, yes.
And you didn't have anyone contacting you, saying, a contiguous neighbor that was upset about this?
I was not the staff liaison at that time.
Well, does that mean that, that everybody was favored, or that somebody complained, and you don't know?
I've said I wasn't the, I don't know for or against it, anything about that. I wasn't the staff liaison, and I didn't watch the, I haven't.
But don't we still have the, underli- I'm, I'm sorry, I guess I'm stuck on this one issue. Where the gentleman has a lot that's landlocked, and I was told, uh, that, I haven't been on here forever, but we've actually been told that it's almost an obligation that we give people access to their lots. So I'm, I'm actually not having, I, again, it seems like that's all we're doing here, is giving someone access, legal, fair access to their property, and, and it's dirt that no one currently owns. It's nobody's owning it. You're saying that it doesn't even belong to anybody except Motherkirk.
That is the legal opinion.
And so now, if it gets encumbered in this, we'll have another few thousand or hundred square feet of taxable property that'll start bringing in money.
And I'm gonna put infrastructure in for proper, uh, drainage.
And that'll get taxed, too?
That the city is going to improvise, and I've already met with Mr. Harrow, and he's telling me exactly what he wants for the watershed coming out of there.
And Mr. Harrow was an engineer.
My entire property, the whole project, is being built under a general contractor. I pulled every single permit, I pulled the proper surveys. There's not one I that I haven't got dotted and T crossed, um, and so, I'm just, I'm back, I'm up against the water, because I have to have access to my property.
So how long ago was it that the notice, the original notice went out to the property owners in the area for comment?
Six weeks to two months ago?
Oh, okay, it was recent.
The date on the map says one fourteen twenty twenty. I can't ima- this.
But the, you guys send it out, I mean, you guys send those letters.
We didn't, we didn't send letters out on this. What happened was, they got ready for it, Todd, and then, that was when the, um, the city manager and that city attorney looked at that and said, "Oh, no, I don't think so." So I don't think, I don't think there was any notice that's sent out. But under the abandonment, there's no procedure for doing that. When it's not the sale of the property, it's an abandonment of an easement. There's no requirement. Unless we were to change our zoning code and, and adopt some procedure for that, which might be, might not be a bad idea, but, um, that's something that's down the road a ways.
And certainly, if we make a recommendation, we'll go to council, and there'll be another opportunity for public input at that point. I mean, this has been publicized in the media, and will be, again, after this meeting, and, and, uh, and noticed, uh, in terms of the agenda on the city council meeting.
Yeah, I, unless we have to do more, I'd like to make a motion that we approve it, subject to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this abandonment of this property.
Recommend.
Huh?
Recommend.
I recommend, sorry.
The recommend, that you recommend to the council.
I make a motion that we recommend to the council that they allow the abandonment of this property, subject to the required drainage easement maintenance and development per the city, and we send it on their way.
Have a second? I second it. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in against? Nay. What do we have here? We have one. I guess it's packed.
Yeah, you have three abstentions, and you have two, two yays.
Thank you, members of board.
Thank you.
Agenda item five, review, discussion and comments regarding abandonment of easements adjacent to and separating parcels one oh three, fifty-nine oh eight-three, one oh three fifty-nine oh eight-four, one oh three fifty-nine oh nine-oh, one oh three fifty-nine one oh six, one oh three thirty, I don't have the eyesight, fifty-nine one oh nine, one oh three fifty-nine one eleven, one oh three fifty-nine one seventeen, one oh three fifty-nine one eighteen, one oh three fifty-nine one nineteen, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-one, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-two, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-three, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-three A, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-four, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-four A, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-six, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-seven, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-eight A, one oh three fifty-nine one twenty-nine, one oh three fifty-nine one thirty, one oh three fifty-nine one thirty-one, as described in the attached survey.
Sorry about that, Doug, I tried to be thorough. I didn't intend for you to have to read that.
Probably didn't need to.
Please, fine.
Please enlighten us here.
Okay, this is, this is also a, um, this, since you guys, you guys saw that this was, this was, um, it's actually the man has already paid you three hundred dollars, which he's gonna get back, either way, because we are, we no longer will sell these, these easements, but. But, um, Mr., I'm trying to think what this one was. Collins. Mr. Collins is, is wanting to do is, he's bought this piece of property. If you, have anybody been up there and looked at that property? It's steep old devil of a hill, I'm really glad, because there've been a number of people over the last few years that have looked at it and wanted to buy it, and, um, come in and talked with me about it. Mr. Collins has agreed to connect to our sewer, which has been an issue, that, um, a contention between, between the city and first possible owners. So Mr. Collins is wanting, but what he, but this property is all cut up with these little easements all over the place on it. And which, he would like to, to consolidate it to where it's more usable. And, um, he was wanting to buy the easements, and, um, no longer can do that, and so, the city is, is proposing that we abandon the easements. Mr. Collins isn't here tonight, but I can. Mr. Collins isn't here tonight, but I can get him on the phone, if that will help, but the, you're looking at the abandonment of easements again. If you, if you'd seen the site, it really would help for the understanding of the site, it's really a site that's gonna give a lot of problems to anybody developing it, it's, I didn't think it would be developed in the foreseeable future. I'm glad to see that he's wanting to do that, though.
I looked at it, but I couldn't figure out where, I mean, this is overwhelming, I have no idea where the easements are, why are they so many?
I think somebody in Philadelphia or something like that sat down with a map and drew these easements up. It's one of those cases, like I was saying, where we've got easements that run across places that are impassable, and lots and lots of easements there, but it's not, they're not serving any good up in the, and I mean, who uses them? There's a trail on the one, and the rest is used by Habalina and Dare.
Can you tell me again, why did the city say that we are abandoning these easements now? Why are we starting that, I guess I'm not grasping that.
Are you asking versus selling, or just?
Yes.
Okay.
I prefer selling myself, Nancy, because it, it turns us a little money, and that's always a good thing, in my opinion, but the, they're not doing it because it's a legal, kind of a legal quagmire of some sort, that they don't, they don't want us to get involved in, it's gonna protect us from liability, is my understanding of the situation.
Okay, so basically, abandoning the easements is, is basically going to maybe keep us out of legal troubles in the future.
I believe so.
Okay, gotcha.
But shouldn't there be some sort of legal decision that that property belongs or doesn't belong to somebody? I mean, it feels like we're saying, we're giving away something that we don't know who owns.
But we, we have an easement on it, is what, is what the legal is asserting, so we would, an easement is not ownership, we're just giving up our easement. And then the county would probably put all those together, but that's up to them, but we're just, we're not asking to give, to give away a right of way. We're abandoning, the wording that they're using is abandonment of an easement.
Except the ownership makes a difference, I mean, it seems like, and I understand that nobody knows that, but it seems like there ought to be something legal that says the city has the right to do that.
Well, the, if I understand it right, gotta go back to Hogan School here, but the, the easement, the, the property underneath it is completely owned by Mr. Collins, I mean, he owns all the lots, so essentially, they're all contiguous, he owns them all, and then laid on top of it essentially is a requirement, for whatever reasons, whether it's for ingress egress, drainage, nature hikes, accessing fishing, you're just giving him the right to walk across it, or drive across it, or whatever, but the actual ownership. In fact, that's a good question, who owns the easement on it, is it a pertinent to, or which ways the easement go? You know what I mean?
I know.
I know, it either serves or, yeah, cause he owns the dirt, we're not, no one's giving away free dirt, we're just, we're just abandoning the rights to walk across it or drive across it, or.
Yeah.
That's, and maybe that helps, I don't know if that helps Jennifer here, because we're not actually giving away the ownership of land, we're just saying we're abandoning our, the city's rights to put a trail across it or something, that they wanted to, or put a power line.
See, this one is a little bit more clear cut for me than the one that we just talked about, because, because all of these are actually owned by the person, and there has been a transfer of money, and so all we're doing is, he owns everything in that red square, all we're saying is, yeah, we believe it's in the city's best interest to abandon those easements, because he already owns all that anyway.
Right, we're not, we're not abandoning Adams Avenue though specifically, because it does go through there.
Okay.
That's, that's not proposed, and I want to make sure that's clear.
Now, on, now, on the other one, we, that, that, that's not what we were doing.
It's not.
That's why that one, I was having a difficult time understanding, because this is very, this is clear cut.
Okay.
Well, and when you buy property in Old Bisbee, at least with my debt, you sign away your mineral rights, that's always been true. Gold, silver, turquoise, copper, and cinnabar, which really upset me, because you never know when you're gonna need cinnabar, but that's always been the case, I mean, that's in.
That's still be there.
Yeah.
That's all still there, I mean, none of us own our mineral rights here in Arizona or anything, so that's not, that has nothing to do with this, right? We're not dealing with any rights or anything.
This one is just clear cut to me, I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay, do I have a motion then?
If I can find you, I'll be happy to.
But we don't have one, and.
You're gonna read all of those?
No.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to recommend to the city council that they, that we recommend that they abandon these easements?
With the exception of Adams Avenue.
With the exception of Adams Avenue.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Okay, let's get to the next stuff, it's gonna be good.
Commissioners' comments.
I have one.
Good.
I don't know if this is the right way to say it, but I don't think we should ever be put in this position again and not have the attorney here.
I agree with you.
We need some support or some people to send this over to us, that need to show up, or let the people know that they can show up when they're all here and we'll deal with it.
I expect them to be here tonight.
So, because that's just not fair to the city, to not have everyone in here when we're dealing with something like abandoning real estate that no one really knows who the heck owns and stuff.
I'll pass that sentiment along, thank you.
Yeah, I personally, next time if it would happen, I would just, I'd move to postpone the whole thing until they could all get their act together and get over here, because I just think that's funky.
You're expressing the same feeling that was expressed at the city council.
Okay, what was my point?
And it seems like there was a lot of information with Todd that we didn't have, this pre-arrangement of the city.
Yeah, it would just been helpful to have the attorney here to explain it all, it might have helped some of the people that didn't vote to understand that maybe it was or wasn't a good idea, or how it might have, you know, might have affected the people, you know, because it came up to me, it was just a straight, give the guy access to his property, hopefully they'll.
This is a painful experience tonight, but it was a necessary experience, and I'm grateful that the commission has aired the issue. It's not fully resolved, but it needs to be resolved, and this is the right avenue to do it.
Yeah, and I, I guess along those comments, my comments are the same, you know, basically the same, but adding that who's, who starts a project on something that you don't own, making a sweeping assumption that that's going to be granted to you? I, I understand that maybe that, down the road, that's not setting precedents, or we could fix something later on, but I'm saying, what it looks like from the outs, what this looks like, Agenda item number five, looks far different from Agenda item number three. And especially in Old Bisbee, where, you know, it's a full-on land grab now, because if we get one more article in Sunset Magazine or some other magazine, and then we're gonna be dealing with, which I've dealt with in the last couple of years, people that are very versed in real estate law, and they're looking to cash in on Bisbee too.
And as you know, it's a mess in the canyon, okay, the legal documents are a mess, and I believe it's a good faith effort on the part of city manager and legal staff to clean up that mess as, as legally as possible. I really believe that, but I don't think that they've done a good job of explaining to all the parties, the council members, and yourselves, the logic and the rationale behind their, their move on this issue, and I agree with you, the two are totally different, but someone has got to make the decision, and this is the right process to go through it, as painful as it may be. It's gonna come back before the council, and we're gonna have to deal with it.
And, you know, I have to say that the last time that we were dealing with the issue on Pace Avenue, again, he had already started work before he had gone through legal process, so.
You know how people, Nancy, they think they own the property that goes up right up to the pavement? I showed up there, and Todd was digging his, digging that property out, and it's like, Todd, what are you doing? I'm just gonna make some parking here, you don't own that, oh yeah, I do, no, I'm pretty sure you don't, you know, went back and got some maps and a tape measure and verified that he did not own that, but he did, he's pretty green around the, he's pretty green when it comes to understanding how those things work.
I would disagree with you, but I think, anyway, that's probably not the place for that, but I think, I've worked with enough contractors, sometimes they just get ahead of themselves. Sorry, Jennifer.
So anyway, that's, that is my, as I see and work in real estate on a daily basis, and I have other people coming in, calling from all over the country, asking, you know, to buy stuff sight unseen, because on Zillow, it doesn't show the top, uh, topography, and they think that a, let's just say an eighteen to thirty-five thousand dollar lot, that's pennies in the bank for them, and I'm saying, we're, we're, this is my opinion, we are just starting to layer ourselves, because we're getting more and more and more well-known, and more and more and more issues are gonna come to this, and we just need to be prepared, because we're, this isn't the first time we're gonna, like, set precedents, whether it's abandoning an easement or whatever. And I personally want to, I'm fifty-five years old, and I wanna build the city of Bisbee that I wanna live in when I'm seventy-five or eighty-five, and that's exactly what we're doing, by setting that precedent.
Do the comments, Andy?
Yeah, I really appreciate the input from all of you, I mean, I, this is my second round on the planning and zoning commission, I've served on it before coming on the council, and then after coming off the council return, and I certainly have always found this commission to be the most stimulating of all the city commissions, and certainly, this certainly was an area in which I had less previous experience, and I was really impressed with the discussion that occurred here, and the knowledge and experience that you all bring to this, so I'm really pleased, and likewise, our latest on with the council here, and I was real pleased with the discussion that occurred here this evening, and what you all bring to this, so thank you.
Can I ask a quick question before we go, are you still in open? What's the status on the punch list that we all got about rough properties, properties? You sent us a list of all the properties with potential violations on them, and we've been talking over time about slowly getting to, through that list, is that, is there any progress on that, or reports on that?
Refrain from any discussion comments only.
What's that?
I can talk with you later, but we can't talk about it here, because this is, Commissioner's comment says no.
Oh, I was just following up on some previous work we've done, are we on discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were, my apologies.
Well, this discussion, we just can't, I mean, I, in response, I did talk with the city manager specifically in terms of sharing that list, and likewise, we brought up the topic of parking in terms of two issues that, that we, that that this, this commission had, had expressed concern over as an ongoing thing, and I don't have anything more to say.
Okay, so, okay, you've answered the question.
And I've also met with the city, the city councilman over here likewise, in terms of sharing both of those issues, in terms of parking and the, the list of dilapidated properties, and what should we do with them, so, and it is something that will require city council to take action on. Anything else? Are we ready to adjourn? Are there subjects, I guess the next one, the future agenda items? Any suggestions there? Again, these two you just mentioned are something that I think we're wanting to continue to, to deal with, but.
Yeah, if a future agenda, I'd like to ask that we maybe get, no, nevermind, it's not a perfect, nevermind, it's not, sorry, no. The questions I have now are just as a citizen of Bisbee, I'll come back to that in some other time.
Maybe I'm anticipating what you were gonna say, but I was gonna recommend that you ask a lawyer to come before you and explain his rationale behind the precedent that you've so eloquently outlined in this room.
Yes, can you back up that?
Yeah, I would suggest that as an agenda, if I can do that.
Perhaps, maybe we can invite the attorney to come in and brief us on this topic.
And of course, this will come before council, before it will come before us again, but anyway, they'll meet sooner than what we will hear, but anyway, that, yes, that needs to be clarified, and that was certainly something we were not resolving, I mean, I think that was certainly a discussion here, and you made it real clear, we weren't resolving that, but just access to property, and property not be landlocked, was the issue in terms of land use to be discussed. Okay, we're talking and talking there, are we ready to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Exactly.
Okay, adjourn.
Okay, now we're off the clock.